Flip that top switch to for the speakers.
Oh, that's Don. That's Don.
Are we on? All right. Time being six o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Patty.
Don?
Here.
Wanda?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Quorum present. At this time, was there any commissioner that has financial or non-financial reason to abstain?
No.
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 I'm just going to reiterate because I saw in last week's or last meeting's minutes that Harmelink and Fox Law Office was included in the body of the claims. And from the beginning, it should have been set off to the side because I cannot vote on that.
Right.
But other than that, no.
There was a motion that was said by itself. I don't know if that matters?
There was a motion to approve the claim severance.
Yes.
Which is?
Yeah, but I just want that.
Yep.
You're just noting that?
Noting it.
Thank you. I have none. Okay, any changes or additions to the agenda?
Yes. On item 10, the WIC contract needs to be removed. We have already approved that.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. At this time, I would entertain anybody in the audience to come forward for public comment. Hearing and... Are you here for the lic-
Yes.
Do you want to wait until that? Or do you want to make a general public comment? Go, just go ahead.
So, I don't know if you guys got my email?
Just make sure you use the microphone.
Can you hear me? Okay. I sent an email earlier, probably about two hours ago. I don't know if you received it or not. I just have reason to believe one of the liquor licenses is not compliant and hasn't been for quite some time. And I just don't think it's fair to other businesses that are trying to get one. And yeah, I mean, I know it's an allegation, but I'd just like it looking looked into. And I don't know what else to say besides that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Item five, county health insurance.
Worse than last time?
Better.
Thank you.
I did receive the answer, but would you rather I go to the microphone?
Ask Wanda. She's a stickler for the microphone.
Well, I'm concerned about our at-home viewership.
Yes.
All right.
I do not have better news from Blue Cross Blue Shield. That I do not have better news on. But in the past, I've talked to you about Medica. Medica is a new company, not a new company to South Dakota, but a new company to the group health market. And they have come back with a quote that is only 1.4, 1.73, and 2.45 higher than your renewal. And so, well within that 4%, 4% to 7% that I had talked to Patty about in an increase. I tell you, if you take a peek at that front sheet, the blue is the Blue Cross Blue Shield 2023 renewal. The green is the actual plan that the county has right now. And then the orange is the Medica plan. The Medica plan that includes the copay, which is-
Just stand back a little bit.
Which is, is this good right here?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Which is identical to the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan. That has an increase of 1.4%. And I'll get to the network in a minute. Then you take a peek at the Medica plan that is in comparison to the $6,500 dollar... Fifty-five. I gotta put my glasses on, sorry. The $5,500 HSA, we actually lowered the HSA amount, which is the amount that is the deductible and the max out of pocket. That's how HSAs work. It also has a prescription drug coverage, meaning that preventative drugs for diabetes, high cholesterol, high blood pressure, those would all be no charge in this $4,500 HSA. And that plan actually has a 1.73% increase over this year's current plan. Then, on the, in comparison to $6,300 HSA, we have a $6,350, so $6,350 HSA. And that is a 2.45 increase. So, over last year's policy. So, for the same comparison. It also has the preventative drug coverage. Now, inside your packet, so that's, this is just kind of a comparison of all plans. Then, if you pick up, this is the actual sheet, close to the actual sheet that we send out or give to your employees to compare the plans. The one in the center is your current plan. If you take a look at Medica and you use the cost of the lowest price plan that you are currently using with Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is the $6,500, excuse, yeah, $6,500 with a max out of pocket of $7,050, $721.14, you're only looking at an increase for a lower max out of pocket of the $4,500 HSA and a very exact same plan that they have with Blue Cross Blue Shield of an increase for the employee of $56.14 per month and $6,301 per month. Now, I'll let you guys look at that. If you pick up the other sheets of paper, I think yours are color, the Medica Choice Passport, this is actually in reference to their network. The network, the key network, is the dark blue states on the back page. And then they also have an additional network. The only difference is, is the the network savings is not as significant inside Medica, the actual Medica network. But of course, it would just get them to their max out of pocket or their deductible quicker. But they will still have coverage. And so, the nationwide coverage is very good. I have several hundred, 65-plus individuals on Medica right now. Their service is excellent. I have no problems. It is, I feel very comfortable offering this to the county employees. They can use, I have called, I've looked up all the hospitals that were utilized yet. They have 100% coverage. You are, pretty much all your employees with their medical history would be in network. I think that this is a fantastic option. Medica is, has coverage on two other counties. Yes, Don?
Did you say pretty much?
Pretty much, I did, sorry. I mean, you know, but it is, Blue Cross Blue Shield's network is stellar. I mean, that's what you're paying for, is you're paying for their network. And it's nationwide. There is no issues. As you can see, there's some white space on this network. But as far as in our immediate area, South Dakota, North Dakota, and Minnesota, you have, with the exception of a hospital on the reservation in Sisseton.
Why is Bismarck in Kansas?
I have no idea.
In Fargo and Pennsylvania.
Maybe there's a Bismarck, Kansas. I don't know. Is there a Bismarck, Kansas? Or a Fargo clear over here?
Fargo's in Pennsylvania.
Well, I apologize. I asked for this map at the last minute because I wasn't happy with the map they sent me. So that's just a typo or a mess. I don't know.
Not to interrupt, but I have another question.
Yes.
We have at least one county employee, if not two, that I've spoken to that treat down in Omaha.
Yes.
Is Omaha included in this dark blue or teal?
They would be in, yes. If you take a peek, all of Nebraska, all of, I mean, Omaha is covered. Right here. Not, there's an area that's white in the center of Nebraska, but Omaha would be included.
So we have dark teal and then light teal?
The light teal is considered the United Healthcare Choice Plus. Yes, ma'am.
So dark teal is?
The Medica Choice and their, it has to do with their in-network discount. So there, if they travel to Nebraska, they are covered. They are not out of network. They just will not have this as significant as in-network savings. Does that make sense? The United Healthcare Choice Plus is a good network.
Okay.
Okay? And the particular hospital that you're speaking of, I purposely looked up and it is in-network.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you say that prescriptions is just as good?
Prescription coverage is where you get a little, not your regular prescriptions. It's very good when it comes to the specialty drugs. There is a $200 copay on specialty drugs.
Total?
Pardon?
Total?
$200 copay on specialty drugs, and then it goes to your deductible on your HSA plans.
Per each time?
No, 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 no. You have, you have an HSA, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we were on the same page.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So basically, you have to pay the 200 first?
For a specialty drug, a tier four specialty drug. And I can email that catalog to you. It's, you know, it was 117 pages and it's accessible online. I can gladly send that to you. But it, you know, the specialty drugs are what is driving your cost up. I mean, that's what's driving, truly driving the renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield up. So it is a concern.
So on the white sheet of paper, all of these would be free?
They are considered preventative medications on the HSA plans, not on the copay plan. But on the HSA plans, yes, Medica preventative drug list. And I was impressed that, I mean, your diabetic insulin is covered. You know, your oral diabetes agents, those can be quite pricey for individuals. Your coronary artery disease, hypertension, all mental, well, not all, but mental health, antidepressants, anything that is considered a preventive drug more than likely is on this list.
You probably covered it last meeting and I apologize.
It's okay.
But what's approximately a current breakdown between people with HSA and copay plans?
Okay, it's on the bottom of your, of your chart, right down here, shows you. Oh, I apologize. Maybe it doesn't. Currently-
There's a total con-
Yes, there's 40. I want to, I don't, I don't have that in front of me. I'm sorry.
There's 49 on the PPO, plus one family on the PPO, so that's 50. Seventeen on the HSA $5,500, 15 on the HSA $6,500.
Okay, so not quite half on the H, okay.
Correct. And the higher, the higher premium, the higher deductible HSA, the benefit there is of course no cost to the employee. So if they just so happen to be on, they're healthy, other than they just take a blood pressure medication, they could go on the same situation and not have a cost to them. And a lower, actually, a lower max out of pocket because the $6,350 HSA plan, max out of pocket, is lower than the $7,500 max out of pocket on the copay plan. So if they're looking at major medical expenses, they're much better off with an HSA, which is kind of how I've advised the employees. Or you could take the $4,500 one and pay the $45 or $50 a month and have a lower max out of pocket. So it's completely on how they want to manage their healthcare.
You have other employers that are on Medica?
No, this is brand new. There are two other counties in the state that have gone to Medica. And I asked Medica, okay, how come you're so much less than the renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield? Well, they're, and I said, are you buying business? And they said, we are absolutely not buying business. They have a community rate that they use, which is the community of Yankton. And then they also took into consideration the other two counties that are on the Medica plan that they've sold. And they adjust their rates that way. So it was, you know, I'm excited about this because I've been waiting for a couple of years for them to offer. They've declined offering you coverage the last two years, and this year they came back with these rates. And I am, I mean, I am, it may be a little bumpy. Anytime you have change, it is. But this is, this is a good insurance company. And like I said, their network is good. Is it perfect? I don't know, Don, but it's good. Blue Cross Blue Shield is excellent. It is. And I don't know if you were aware, Joe, they, Avera declined?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, yes.
I think we talked in the past, like with Medica, Sanford or Avera are covered. Is that, it's seamless to the employees and so?
Mm-hmm. And actually, you know, when you travel to Rapid City, the hills, there is a hospital that doesn't accept Sanford, and these guys do. Yes, Wanda?
Talk loud, I'm old.
Okay.
So what happens a year from now if
I know.
Medica's not around?
Well, I think Medica will be around. My fear would be it comes back high, you know, the renewal, you know? And then we go back to Blue Cross Blue Shield. I mean, it's, this is a painful exercise I'm having to do with a lot of groups. You know, if you want to, but you're not, in my opinion, with the exception of the specialty drug copay, that situation, you're not giving up benefits for your employees.
Any loss to leaving Blue Cross and going back?
Yes, yes. You could come back even higher. The renewal could come back even higher than it is this year. Yes.
Right.
And I went back to them three times and asked them to lower their rates. And the pleading didn't work this time. And we even, I even sent them Medica's rates and said, can you compete with this? And no.
So do the major, what do the majority of county employees have? The copay or the HSA?
It is a, Sherry shared a 50, well, 49 individuals have the copay plan and one family. So 50 employees have the copay plan, and then it's pretty even split between the other two HSAs.
Fifteen and seventeen?
Right.
So 32, so 50 PPO, 32 HSA.
That Medica can, could come back too with an even higher?
Right.
Right?
Right, next year. Yes, they could. And then we could put it back into Blue Cross Blue Shield and see where that comes, you know, see where it comes in. I mean, a 21% increase is high. And I know you budgeted for somewhere between four and seven, so.
Almost 200,000 bucks.
I know.
Any further questions this time?
So if-
When do we need to know?
Do you have to do it today?
Today.
It is today? Okay.
Because the, we have a situation where the auditor, they need to get this, if we're going to switch, it's going to take some time and they need the time.
Yep. So if we stay with Wellmark, which is, when you look at the, this is very, very good to visualize it. So the blue column would be a renewal with Wellmark, and that's almost a 16% increase to the county. It's a higher increase to the employees.
Yes.
It's like 20, what did I calculate over here?
It's how much to the employee?
It's 100% increase to the employees. Because what they're paying this year compared to what they will be paying is double. Because this year, when you look at what the employees pay, it's $54,000. And the renewal would be $108,000 is what the employees would be picking up because that PPO plan is going up so much. And half of them have that plan. So the county's cost only goes up 100, only goes up $112,000. So if we would go with the orange, which is Medica, it's actually a $17,000 savings to the county. And I haven't had the time to pencil out the increase to the employees, but it's far less than what it would be with Blue Cross.
Right. And if you, if you, you know, ever, if you did just consider paying the $7,2114 like you are right now with all, the lowest cost plan on Blue Cross Blue Shield and pass those savings on to the employees, the increase, and that's what that arrow is, the increase for the HSA $4,500, remember we're lowering the max out of pocket, $1,000. It is $56.14 and $6,301. If you use the same 421, 721.14 that you currently are paying.
That's what the arrows are.
That's what the arrows, I'm sorry, yeah. So, you know, actually, it wouldn't be an increase to your budget at all. And you could pass those slight savings on to the employees.
And I think at this time, maybe it's a good time to talk about family plans.
Right.
Our market is pretty tough out there and benefits for families are very important. I did talk to, well, I emailed back and forth with the city a little bit, and the city pays 100% for the employee and 50% for family. So in this case, if you're looking at green, where we are today, we pay $7.21. If we said, well, we'll pay 50% of family, we would pay $8.87, well, almost $8.88 on that. It would essentially cost us an extra $2,300 a year. We only have one family on the plans. Would it be enough incentive to get more families on our plan?
Yes, yes.
You know, if we stayed with Blue Cross Blue Shield, I don't think it would.
No, 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 not with Blue Cross, but Medica.
If we went with Medica, I think it would. I think we would get more families. And there, if we use $7.21, just a second.
Because your family plan on the $6,350 is actually less expensive than the $6,500 between Medica and Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Right.
So we would base it off of a base family plan.
Right.
Let's just use the green, and that was $8.87, so $1,960.
We're having more families than we've had in the past, too.
Oh, gosh, yes.
It's changing. I know we've had some people who ended up not taking jobs because of our health insurance, so it is a, it is a problem.
I will throw in there, family coverage is expensive anywhere. It really is. And the marketplace, just to let you all know, the marketplace did just now accept, it's called the family glitch acceptance.
Is that fixed or?
That is fixed.
It's not challenged yet?
It is not challenged as of yet. And I just got word on Monday that as far as they know, it is through. So if you do have a family, an employer who has family insurance and they fall within the poverty guidelines, they can take a marketplace plan for those family members. Of course, the employee has to take the group plan, but that is a, it's called family glitch.
Because before, if the employee had insurance offered,
Correct.
the family plan wasn't covered under the marketplace, correct?
No, the fam, they had the-
They couldn't take a family plan on the market?
Correct, right, right. But I think you found many families doing it anyway because it just was unaffordable. So they have, as far as I know, Congress has put that through.
So it's like $2,000 per family if we did $1,775, which is what the family base is this year.
$2,000 a year, sure.
Per, extra for a family if someone would choose, so. Because that family plan at $1,960 costs a family $23,500 a year.
Yeah.
And we would share 2,000 of that. So it's not a huge difference. It's still very expensive. And I think the family glitch thing is going to be very attractive for many. But I would throw that out there as something we need to consider when we make our choice.
I'd be supportive of that. Do we need all of these details? It'd be nice to just get it done, I guess. But we definitely need to pick what direction we're going.
Yes.
Does anybody have big hesitation on changing? Or questions before we? I would say I'm in favor of changing as well as expanding cover.
I'm sorry?
As well as expanding some cost share to the family. I still don't know that it's going to be real competitive, but I think it's going to become an issue filling physicians with younger families.
I'm assuming it's a typo in the caption at the third and the fourth over from the right. We're not really in the year 20232.
I just got these rates yesterday, so.
I thought maybe that was something that-
This is, I'm, I'm, yeah.
That meant something special?
No. $20,232, yeah. No, it's 20,023.
Is there any ability to lock in rates for a couple of years or? Be nice if that was, it'd give us some stability on budgeting, but.
At one time, at one time, they used to do that, Dan, but it's gone away. It's just- It's just, it's too hard, they don't.
They probably would if we, we promised not to have any big losses.
We could make, I'll have you make that promise, Don. No, I, I understand.
So, the max out-of-pocket's significantly higher.
On what?
On the Medica.
Only on the out-of-network.
On out-of-network, correct?
Out-of-network, and honestly, I don't think that's going to be a real issue. I mean, you have, you have employees that, you know, are used to the Avera network, and that's one hundred percent in-network, you know, so, you know. It's always best to call, if you're leaving the state, call, you know, if you're gonna go get a doctor's appointment out of the state, except for Minnesota, cause Medica is domicile in Minnesota, so of course Mayo is one hundred percent covered, but more and more people are using Nebraska, Omaha, but I, like I said, I researched the best I could, of course, I don't, I can't check one hundred percent, but call, and if you're in-network, you're covered.
Your pen's smoking over there, you gotta figure.
I'm always writing, sorry. Always, always something else to look at.
So, if we choose to switch to Medica, I would suggest the county pays seven twenty-five toward whatever the employee wants to pick, and so that would make the sixty-three fifty essentially free to the employee.
It would make it what?
Free to the employee, just the employee, because that would be completely paid, which is how we do it.
For the fifty-five co-pay?
No.
No, for the bottom one, the HSA sixty-three fifty.
Okay.
So, currently, if you look at the green column, where that blue star is, we pay seven twenty-one fourteen, so that plan to a single employee is completely free, and we pay seven twenty-one toward the ones above it. So, for the HSA fifty-five hundred, the employee chips in forty-five bucks, for the co-pay, they chip in about forty-five dollars. So, if you go to the orange column, if the county chooses to go ahead and say, we're gonna just pay seven twenty-five, that's a little bit of an increase, toward the blue star, the HSA sixty-three fifty, that plan remains free to the employee. If they want to upgrade to the HSA with a lower deductible, then they're going to be paying fifty-two dollars or so.
Fifty-two thirty.
And then if they go to the co-pay plan, it'd be about sixty.
Fifty-nine sixteen, fifty-nine fifteen.
So, which is pretty comparable for what, what they are paying currently. If we go with Blue Cross, if you look at those increases, the co-pay would be a hundred and thirty-five a month for an employee, if they want to stick with that co-pay, co-pay, co-pay plan on that. Now, and then, paying fifty percent of the family HSA sixty-three fifty, so the blue star in the orange, so that's seventeen fifty-eight sixty-eight, the county would pay fifty percent of that, which is eight seventy-nine thirty-four. So, again, that gets the county just over an extra two thousand dollars. So, if I'm the employee, my family comes on, the county is going to be charged about two thousand dollars more for my family, versus just me.
Would you use that eight seventy-nine then on all the plans, Sherry?
Yes, for the, any family, whatever family, you get that baseline.
Got it, okay, that's your baseline.
Just like we do the employee.
Okay.
So, so for that base plan, that sixty-three fifty, the family would end up paying ten thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars every year, just for that plan. I do think the drug coverage on those HSA plans is a.
That is a great bonus.
Is a real benefit.
The preventative.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep, because you want people to take those, so they don't get into.
So they don't get sick.
Bigger issues, yes.
Sure, you wanna make a motion to that effect?
Is everyone done? Dan, did you have any comments?
I, I'm just listening, so. I have Army Insurance, so this is all new to me, so, I have Tricure, so it's a lot different than this.
Yes, it's free. It's wonderful.
So, yes, I'll try to, let me, let me talk, don't anybody second the motion until we get it right, please. So, I would move to choose the Medica healthcare plan, where the county pays seven hundred twenty-five dollars toward the employee coverage, and pays fifty percent of the family plan for the HSA sixty-three fifty.
Are you done?
I think I got everything, anybody have a concern?
Then I would second it.
There you go, thank you, Wanda.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to move to Medica healthcare, with the county paying seven hundred twenty-five dollars towards the single plan, employee plan, and if they choose an additional fifty percent, which would be eight seventy-nine.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, to the family plan.
It would be just fifty percent of the family plan, not an additional fifty percent on top of the employee, yep.
Right. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Patty.
Sure.
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Okay, we'll get to work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for bringing the rates.
Julie, thank you for all the work you did on this.
No problem, my pleasure, my job.
Okay, item six, Mike, gravel bid.
We opened up bids for gravel on October twentieth, had one bid from Daniel Kuvall from over by Lusserville for eight forty-one a ton. And the bid was for twenty-five thousand ton plus or minus. It's looking like he should have more than that, we're not for sure on how much, but I feel eight forty-one is a good price right now, comparing to other pits selling gravel, so. I think everything's just going to get higher.
It'd be nice having some gravel over in the western part of the county, too.
Yeah, and this here, this here would be right in between two townships.
Yeah, yep.
Then also it'd be closer for like Zizkov South, and parts of Utica South.
Entertain a motion.
Do you have any indication why Night River and Mark Horg didn't bid?
I kinda had it zoomed in on the very far west side of the county on the bid specs.
Because that's where you're gonna use it.
Cause that's where I wanted it.
Okay.
Still open for, you know, seems to me there's a lot of places along the Beaver Creek have gravel, so there, there is more opportunity there, yep.
It's a good place to have some stockpile, so we're not burning up diesel, running it all over from one side of the county to another, so, I, I guess I'd move approval of the bid.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, item seven, liquor license renewals, we got on time, so.
Dale Hebde, owner Hebde Family Produce, three zero six six one, one hundred and forty-fourth Avenue, Mission Hill, South Dakota. When I went in to do the renewal, the auditor said that I gotta come here and testify cause somebody filed a complaint that we're not open for business, which is, in my mind, insanely crazy, because you're open for business, that's why you have a business. As I read their article, it says, for the purpose of this section, the term actively used means that the licensed premises was open to the public during regular business hours for the sale and consumption of distilled spirits for at least sixty days during the two prese, two preceding years. We don't open the farm to the general public until after the first weekend in May, cause it's our opening farmer's market weekend up in Sioux Falls, which is always insane, it's the first one in six months. The end of September, our focuses changed, we're no longer up and around the shop, we're out in the orchard, we're picking, we're pruning, we're doing those types of things, but over that time period, you know, anybody that stops, anybody that comes in, should they choose to partake in a distilled beverage, it's available to them. For this past year, that means we're open for a hundred days. Don't know if it means anything, we brought our inspection, we got a ninety-nine, by the way, that was done on October nineteenth. I do have sales tax receipts here from May through September. So, don't know what else to add to you, but we're open for business.
Excuse me, I have a question, your sales tax receipts, is it broken down by apples and pumpkins and distilled beverages?
No.
So, how can you establish that you were open for sixty days if you don't have some kind of a breakdown?
It was a hundred days.
Well, you were open for a hundred and eight, but.
There, there's nothing in the statute that says I actually, I have to be open, it doesn't say I have to sell anything, it just says I need to be open and it's available.
So, how much have you sold in distilled beverages in two thousand twenty-two?
I'd say in general, we, we belong to a group, it's called Harvest Hosts, it's an RV society where people, they come and they stay at the farm, those would be our biggest consumers, you know, because they're there for an evening, they stop at the shop, we visit, we talk, we have a cocktail together, and they go on about their night, and I'd say, you know, three, four drinks a month.
Do you intend to expand your business to have more distilled spirits sold? Or are you going to continue down the three or four drinks a month?
It, it's more the auxiliary service that we offer to people that come there and camp and things like that. We do not promote ourselves as a bar, we do not promote ourselves as a restaurant, or a produce farm that happens to have a liquor license.
If you're only selling three or four a month, couldn't you, when these people come up with their RVs, couldn't you just give them a drink? Versus selling it to them?
You could, but I also charge them for the fire pit, so if they wanna bonfire out there, they're paying thirty bucks for a fire pit.
I've got an email from the state as well, do you have any receipts from your wholesalers or purchasing receipts?
The last time we bought, we bought from Eldon, Nygaard, Valiant Vineyards, and I still.
I'm sorry, from who?
Eldon, Nygaard, Valiant Vineyards, and Vermillion, and I still have inventory.
Okay.
Does Valiant sell hard alcohol?
They're, they're a distillery, yes.
Okay, I didn't know, I thought they were just wine. I think this, they make bourbon now, according to the sign as you drive by.
Gotcha.
But what we get from Eldon is brandy, his apple brandy, it's gotten gold awards in New York, and his whiskey and his vodka.
Any other questions for Mr. Hebde at this time? Okay, you may have a seat, thank you. Anybody else care to make a public comment on the liquor license applications? Hearing and seeing non-public comment is closed. I'll come back to the board for discussion. And when we did, typically, we do a motion for all of them at one time, correct? Okay?
Patty, to Wanda's point, the Captain Norms, should that be a transfer, or is that a?
No, they sold it as an LLC.
Got it. Thank you.
When you say they sold it as an LLC, they sold Captain Norms as an LLC, but can you sell a liquor license within an LLC?
The state was called on it and said, and they said it was correct.
Okay.
I'll move approval of the request for renewal of Uniform Alcohol Beverage License Applications as presented.
Motion for approval?
Second.
And a second, further discussion?
I guess I have a continuing somewhat issue with having a liquor license and not really using it.
The statute says, let's see, actively used, for the purposes of this section, the term actively used means that the licensed premises was open to the public during regular business hours for the sale and consumption of distilled spirits for at least sixty days during the two preceding years, so essentially thirty days a year. However, the licensed premise is only required, oh, the last part, they don't serve more than twenty-five thousand, so it does not say in there how much you have to sell, it just says you have to be open and have it available.
And I really, I think this is an, an issue of, you know, I wish the state would allow us to have more on-sale liquor licenses, because there are a lot of small businesses that could benefit from it, but unfortunately, we, we have the number that we have, and I, I don't, are we, we're not getting any new ones anytime soon until we cross a population threshold, and in my opinion, it's unfortunate, I wish we had more, and I'm, I guess, when we did the medical marijuana licensing, and we did ten of them, it was because of a situation like this, where, you know, if somebody has it, you know, it's not necessarily a free-market system, they have it until they don't need it anymore, or. necessarily a free market system, they have it until they don't need it anymore, I guess until they're not in compliance. It's a bad situation. I get the frustration.
I understand that, but I think we're parsing hairs when you say open for business, whereas I'm selling apples and I'm selling squash and I'm selling pumpkin, and then I sell three or four distilled drinks per month. It would be nice if the state would, maybe our legislature would quantify what sales include and make a separate column on their little sheet so we know if they sell ten dollars a month or five thousand dollars a month. Because if you're not really using it...
Mr. Hebde runs it during the summertime or when he's got tours. We're all about tourism in our county and the need for that. And he's paid his premium cost, right? I don't give a damn whether he's open sixty days or five days. Probably makes a difference to the state, but it's his business.
Well, I get that. I just think it should be, if you've got a license, use it more. But I also understand what the statute says.
So, we've got a motion in a second. I will say, Mr. Hebde, I'd encourage you to keep some receipts of alcohol sales in the future so if this were to arise again. But outside of that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Reed CUP.
I'm not seeing Mr. Reedy here, so basically, he's requesting a CUP to construct a shop that's three thousand seventy-two square feet and R two. It's on almost eleven acres, but it's over the twenty-four hundred square foot, so that's why we're here for a CUP.
Is anybody here to speak on behalf of Mr. Reedy? That, I will open it up to public comment. Does anybody in the audience care to make a public comment on the application? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Bring it back to the boards for discussion. I'll go through the findings of fact here from planning and zoning. Requirements of seventeen twenty-three were met as well seventeen twenty-nine and fees were paid. Applicants requesting a conditional use permit to construct an accessory structure that is three thousand seventy-two square feet in a moderate-density residential district. For Article seven, Section seven oh seven, mailings went out, publishings were in the paper. He was at the public hearing. Planning commission recommendation was to grant. Ingress egress exists, there's no off-right-of-way parking required, refuges present, utilities are present, no screening and buffering required, no signs are being installed, no required yards other than open spaces, and it is in general compatibility with the adjacent properties and will not adversely affect public interest. Any other discussion?
Make a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion?
Based on findings of fact.
Based on findings of fact. Roll call vote, please, Patty.
Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Motion passes. I would entertain a motion to come out of...
Make a motion to come out of Board of Adjustment and go into regular session.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item nine, October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, meeting minutes.
Move to approve. Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will abstain. Motion passes four zero. With one abstain.
Who abstained?
I did. I was playing hooky.
Oh, it's all right.
Okay, October two thousand twenty-two payroll.
Move approval of payroll.
Second.
Oops, I forgot claims, but... Further discussion for payroll? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Go back to claims.
Move approval. Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Budgeted cash transfer for highway.
Is that in the packet anywhere?
Yep, it was the last page in item ten.
Yep. There's a handwritten...
It's on the pool cash report.
At the... On the last page, is that the...
It's handwritten on it.
Five hundred and, which one are we doing, the five hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight seventy-three?
Oh, there's two million.
Okay. So, what's the, what's the five hundred?
That's the balance.
That's a balance that'll be left?
Yep.
And this is for...
Budgeted. Budgeted cash transfer.
Got it.
So essentially, we always transfer from the general fund into the highway fund?
It's been pretty lucky though, the last couple of years, we haven't had to do it, so...
That's the, the FEMA reimbursement helped us out there.
Yep. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item eleven, juvenile detention center discussion.
Don asked, did you ask for this to be put on?
I think I asked about it. I, maybe Gary can help us with that. Gary attended a meeting I missed. On the JDI building.
Talking about the mini ah one or...
Yes.
Are you talking about the program through the Boys and Girls Club?
Well, we were talking about building a new detention center and what we'd have to pay, that's what I'm interested in.
And that wasn't at the JDI?
No.
That wasn't, okay.
No, that was, that was a conference call and then they sent out a link to the discussion they had at their commission meeting. And I think we forwarded that to all the commissioners to listen to.
Yeah, if I need to bring up that email, I can.
And so, their meeting was on October eighteenth, and I did go out and watch that video, and it was essentially the same meeting that, the pre-meeting they had with the partner counties, was it on the eighth or something? I have those notes here too. But they were, they were essentially looking at about fifty million dollars and paying it off over twenty years. And our share on that during that original was about, the payment was about two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
The first year, based on usage. So, as your usage goes down, your five-year average gets less and less of the percent of the payment. So, right now, our percentage was like five and a half percent of the payment on that. So...
Looks like an extremely expensive option to me.
It is, it is.
Over, we ought to be looking at other options.
Well, to house juveniles, we can't do it in RJ. If we have a juvenile, we have no choice with...
I understand that. But there are other options that could be available. For example, maybe Lewis and Clark could step in and do something in that area in their new facility.
Once, once they're up and running, but it's going to be...
I understand that, but if we sign this deal, we're in it for twenty years.
And I thought during that first meeting, and I'm sure they recorded it, so anybody's welcome to ask for that link, I don't have that link to that first meeting, but I recall them saying that they would renegotiate a contract, because we just signed a contract this summer for juvenile detention. And the whole, your share of it is, is based on your usage, but they did say they would renegotiate...
And the two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand, that's only for the construction of the building.
Correct.
We'll still pay for the daily rates if we have kids in there.
What about HSC? They've got three empty wards. Why don't we put them out there?
Well, we have to find people to run that then, if they don't have people to do that.
Well, I get it, but for two hundred and fifty thousand, we might be able to.
But it's such an up, I mean, we might have one today and then two months, we don't have one, and then we've got one for seven days or seven months or...
Yeah, because it's such an up and down usage that you do get into a bind, but to your point, if you choose not to join and you just pay the daily rate for the non-member, the daily rate for the non-member wasn't that much more, and you can have a lot of kids sitting up there for the difference of the daily rate.
So, on that phone call, that first one, I said, hey, guys, the non-members here have to have some skin in the game somehow too. Their daily rate needs to be really jacked up to recover some of this capital investment is what it is, because you need to price that into those folks too. Otherwise, it makes no sense to be a partner.
Right.
Is the daily rate, is that, that's not set in statute or by law or anything like that? That's a...
That's an annual contract we just get with them.
This was based on our bed usage was only five point five nine percent of the capacity from two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-one.
For what were those dates?
Two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-one.
And I guess to Don's point, you know, we didn't have JDI then, so our hope, our hope would be that our usage and our rate would be less with our diversion program. That's the whole reason we did it in the first place.
Well, I think the, Deb, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we have a large volume ever. It's like one kid is there for a long time, and I don't, the previous case, I don't think the JDAI is probably tailored to catch, maybe.
I think that person was an exception.
Right.
What's that about the one that shot somebody's arm off?
So...
No, the one that was involved in an altercation and somebody lost their arm. That one.
Did anybody find it?
Yep, laying right there on the floor.
Well, I mean...
So, I guess my point is, I don't know that JDAI is gonna make a huge impact on, on that portion of it. Hopefully reduce some over a twenty-year span or ten-year span, but it's, we don't have a large number of individuals going there. Just when we do, it's expensive.
Well, two hundred and fifty thousand is five million dollars.
If that's our, if that's our payment, if that's our payment every time, so if we get to a point where we're not using it all, our payment would be zero. But to your point, Don, the two hundred and fifty-seven dollars a day is what we pay. If we're not a member, we pay three thirty-five. So, if you look at that difference and we have a kid in there full year, it's twenty-eight thousand five hundred. We can have nine kids in there and have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar bill every day of the year and not be a member. So, I mean, when you think about it that way, there is some consideration to that. So, going into it, now, we have no idea what the state's gonna do. I have a feeling they will probably ask the state, because there's a juvenile study group again this summer, for how to deal with juveniles. So, will the state come in and say, you know what, it's a regional facility, we're gonna help you out because we can't send these kids to real prison? Maybe they'll, they'll own up to that and help. It's really preliminary right now, but it certainly needs to be considered.
That's all I wanted to visit about.
Okay. Anybody else before we move on? Okay. Item twelve, Yankton County Facebook page.
So, there was a concerned citizen at our previous meeting who alerted us that one of our county Facebook pages, it was our county commission page, was blocking people. So, the immediate action was we went out to our county commission Facebook page and took down all the posts. I took down all my posts, we took down Dan's post, Valley's post. Essentially, there's really nothing on that page right now, just to be, to be cautious because the courts have said if you have a political, social media, whether it's Facebook, Twitter, whatever else is out there, you cannot prevent people from seeing that. You can prevent all comments and do that, just say it's just informational, but if you allow comments, you have to allow anyone to comment unless, of course, they're using swear words or things like that. But in this case, the allegation was the person couldn't see the information that was posted, and so that's why we, we took the cautious approach and took them all down. So, then the next week, which would have been last Tuesday, so a week ago, I sat down with, State's Attorney's Office was there, and a member of all of the county teams that have a Facebook presence, and I was actually kind of surprised at our large Facebook presence. So, we actually have two, Yankton County Commission, one's a group and one's a community. We have a Yankton County Highway Department, Yankton County EMS, Yankton County Emergency Management, Yankton County 4H, Yankton County Search and Rescue, Yankton County Fair, and Yankton County Sheriff's Office. So, these are used to differing degrees. Some of them are set up as emergency rescue service pages. Some of them, like the Yankton County Commission page, was a community page or, or, excuse me, a group page, and that's kind of what got us in trouble on that one. So, we talked about, you know, what, what do we already have in place? Well, Paul, Paul being Paul, Paul is always organized, and he had put together a policy on media publications and social media, and I don't think I got that in your, in the packet. But it is, he put it together, one, because he had so many folks trying to get information out, that he had to have some way to kind of control what information, because when you're in an emergency response, the type of information you put out there has to be somewhat HIPAA compliant and all of this. You can't get, it's kind of like when the police say, details will be released later. So, he did put that together. But we, we talked about how, you know, who's administrators on all of these pages? Do you have anything set in place? Are you allowing people to comment? Are you not allowing people to comment? Should we allow people to comment, et cetera? And there was varying opinion on the type of page. Paul, for example, said, you know, when we have a disaster, he said, it is helpful if someone in Turkey Valley Townships had posted something and says, this bridge is out. He said that we monitor that, then we can get out there and put signs and such, such up. So, so there are benefits to interacting with the public through that platform on there. So, what was in the packet, Gary did a little poking around with some of the other counties to see if they had a social media guideline, if you will. And really, what I was looking for is how the system is set up, not necessarily how... And really, what I was looking for is how the system is set up, not necessarily how we ask our employees to monitor their behavior. If you looked in our handbook, there is a social media section, it's three thirteen. And it describes to folks, essentially, I'm an employee. When I'm posting things on Facebook, I shouldn't be posting Sherri Lost Deputy Auditor when I'm posting things on Facebook, unless it's official county business. So that's kind of described in our handbook already. They're prohibited from posting, displaying comments about customers, suppliers, coworkers, that are vulgar, obscene, threatening, intimidating, et cetera, et cetera. So really, we have a nice generic social media do's and don'ts for interacting and, and just making sure that what I say on social, social media is not negatively reflecting on the county or is not misconstrued as the county's opinion. So that's in our handbook already. What I kind of liked about Pennington Counties, and that is in your handbook, is they had a, it's called Pennington County Departments. So it talks about the type of sites that they should have. So make every effort to clearly, clearly identify, it's an official Facebook page or Twitter page. Use the logo if you can. Some social media sites allow user comments. Pennington County will consider carefully whether to allow comments before launching. If allowed, user feedback should remain regardless of whether it is favorable or unfavorable, and that gets into First Amendment rights. If you're having an official page, that is a First Amendment platform. Comments will be deleted only if they are offensive, abusive, racially inflammatory, threatening, or clearly off-topic. So they do have some discretion there. So if someone's using the F-word five times, certainly that can be removed. Comments that endorse a political candidate party or commercial product will be deleted as well. When reposting or referencing a post on the county's sites, provide a link to the original post, so that, that takes them off-site and ensures accuracy. Always be mindful of functions that allow the organization to be a fan of an individual or cause. So again, we don't want County Commission to be out giving the thumbs up to Bob Smith for whatever. We've got to show neutrality there. And so I, I thought that was a nice concise stepping stone for how we should go through all of these. And I did talk with the city, and it was very productive. The gentleman there gave us some good insight and provided the, what was that other one I sent you? It was a guideline from the National League of Cities. And it just, food for thought for how to, how to think about your presence and organizing it. But the gentleman I talked with from the city was essentially an administrator on every Facebook page or every Twitter site. So there's consistency there in monitoring, and they always have a second administrator. So if the bread truck hits Bob on the way home, you've got a second administrator if they're on vacation or lot, a lot, a lot, a, so, so there's some control there. But never allowing Sherri Lost as Sherri Lost to post to a county page. It should be as Yankton County Commission posting. And that's our bad for doing that to date, and, and I'm guilty of that. So I think going through, we did not make any changes other than cleaning up the Yankton County Commission Facebook page immediately, so that one's clean. But the others, for the most part, like the Yankton County EMS, they post as Yankton County EMS, so they've got a hierarchy already. So I think it's just sitting down and getting a nice, short, this is what we want, this is how we're gonna control it, and then making sure we get that set up. So. I talked a long time. Does anyone have any advice or direction for going forward? I'm not sure. My, my hope was to get something for the next meeting, and I'll work, I'll work on that. But I, I don't know if we'll have a polished version by November fifteenth. Maybe a draft version to bring by November fifteenth for review.
I do think, so, the other entities besides the commissions, two pages, seem to be well organized. Everyone is clear as to who the admins are and how things are posted. My take on things after the meeting was, we should not have two commission pages. And the commission page that we have needs to be certified. It is not. And so my recommendation would be the two current commission pages, put a deadline on it, as of January one, those are gone. And there is a Yankton County Commission Facebook page that is certified. And you determine who is allowed to be the admin on that page. Not necessarily the individual who has to do all of the legwork, so to speak. But my recommendation would be, even if you don't have a tech-savvy chairperson, that the chairperson of the commission
What are you saying?
Would be the admin. And then whether it's someone in the auditor's office, someone, I mean, we have some individuals that could be the practical, day-to-day posting. But those two pages should be done, and it be redone, certified, one county commission page.
Yes, absolutely.
Do we know? Do we know who's admins on these currently and how to get rid of it?
There's a, there's a Facebook page, and then there's a Facebook group.
I have no idea what that is.
And there's a difference between the two. And if we would post on the Facebook page as Yankton County Commission, I think that would eliminate all of that stuff.
But cert.
But, but the group page is part of the problem.
Yeah, the group page needs to go. I agree, I would agree.
Because people aren't, people are unaware when they see Yankton County Commission. And so the fact that one is a group, and it, it shouldn't happen. So once you do Yankton County Commission, and it's a certified page, like City of Yankton, then it's clear that that is the only governmental page. And so I think we need to clarify who admins are on those two different pages.
I'd agree. And Dan, I asked you to go to that meeting, and then I thought you were, I thought you were on that email and you weren't, so.
Yeah, I, I apologize. We'll get it, we'll get it figured out.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if, I think most of this would just be done offline, getting things set up and getting a.
And we can either maybe start and just make a whole new page, or, and like, like State's Attorney says, and get it certified and do it right. Maybe that's the best way to go, long-term.
Step one, we probably need this policy.
Yep.
And then.
Have one for next meeting, a draft?
I'll try to.
Put it on.
So I don't, I didn't get the feeling, and Deb, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, about Twitter, that folks were really kind of migrating away from Twitter. That was before, before the charges now for getting the certified pages, but they didn't feel that was really as worthwhile as the Facebook.
Correct.
Platform. So it's really just here. Okay.
Okay. Move into Code of Conduct, item thirteen. I think that's.
Not supposed to be mine, but I don't have it written up the way I wanted.
Okay.
Okay, well, I found what I liked.
Oh, well, let's go with hers, maybe.
I didn't, I didn't have staple though, so I apologize.
This is their twenty-twelve?
It's just a sample of what I think we need to do.
Can we just do a code conduct?
Yeah, we got one in the handbook.
Didn't we just enact it?
Yes.
Three years ago?
Okay, so my partner and I have not spoken. But the code of.
Because I don't have your phone number.
No, I am. The code of conduct is a very general provision. So when you look at that, it says if there's a violation, you can remove a person, yada, yada, yada. What I discovered was, and this is an example of a resolution, that they realized there was basically nothing in their code of conduct that says how you do that. And I would agree. So you have a violation of the code of conduct. Who does the investigation to determine how it was violated, if it was violated? And then how do you proceed with that? Well, what they did was they just did a resolution and set out, in this case, it was the city, you know, the city attorney is gonna investigate, you're gonna do this. And so I would suggest something similar. I don't know if that's where Wanda was headed. But as it sits right now, it just basically says, don't do it, but there's no, there's no teeth.
That's what, when we got our first one, I had issued that.
Right.
We shouldn't even need a code of conduct to tell you how to act, but.
Correct.
With no teeth to it.
Correct. So my thought would be, at least right now, that it would be something like this. So you have a violation, how are you gonna handle it? And I'm sure there are others out there, but that was just the one that I found and just printed off for you. So, because, I mean, we do currently have a violation, and I don't know what, if anything, the commission is comfortable doing, or who's going to continue to look into it, because the current handbook doesn't tell us that.
So what is the teeth in this one? I'm trying to.
That you would.
Like they just publicly shame them, is what it looks like to me.
It, it basically, I mean, basically, it allows, it allows you to go through due process so that the individual has the opportunity to challenge whatever. And then, again, I think it's up to the commission. The current one says you can remove them from office. You can allow them not to participate, that type of stuff. But I think the thought would be, you can either reword the current one, or what these guys did was they just did a resolution to specify the process.
I'm not saying we shouldn't move forward with something like this, but do, is a resolution saying that to investigate and that necessary to?
I think you could do it any number of ways. It was, it was just obvious that other.
People have had issues.
Government entities have had the problem of, what do we do when there's a violation?
Right.
And so if it's clear there was a violation and who committed the violation, you don't have to go through a process. If, however, it isn't clear who violated it, then obviously you need to go through a process. And then what's the outcome if it's determined that there was a violation?
Okay. Everyone okay reading through this, and then next meeting we'll.
I will.
Hit on it. Okay.
Maybe the commission can browbeat Ms. Lillian to giving me her phone number. Now, that one doesn't help.
Okay, item fourteen, county handbook holidays. Are we ready to?
All right, so. So in, in the packet was our current section six oh six holidays with red marks.
Is that showing on yours?
Hmm, I do not have the red mark.
No, because we're, we're termed out at fourteen.
That's already changed. Okay, so bummer. I thought that was going to show as red marks. My bad on that. So six oh six would essentially be the amended version. So what it does is it puts in the line that says, the following days are deemed holidays for eligible employees per SDCL one five one. So there are eleven. That number twelve shouldn't be there. There are eleven holidays currently approved at the state level. So New Year's Day, Martin, MLK, Presidents, Memorial, Juneteenth, Independence, Labor, Native American, Veterans, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. Down below, it says, in addition, every day appointed by the President of the United States or by the governor of South Dakota for a public fast, Thanksgiving, or holiday will be observed. That used to say, may, may. Be adopted by the, the county commission. So it's will be observed as a legal holiday by the county commission. So those, that's really the only change. And I can look in, if anybody wants to look in the real book, I've got it marked here. But that is the, the only changes that were made. Other than I deleted Good Friday, because Good Friday is not officially recognized, and the day after Thanksgiving. Those two were replaced with Juneteenth.
And Native American Day.
And Native American Day. So essentially, per Mr. Hunhoff, the last twenty, thirty years, the governors have given off the Friday after Thanksgiving. Some of them give off a half a day at Christmas Eve. Some, I think.
Some do not.
Ms. Noem gave all of Christmas Eve off one year. And I know one year she gave off Easter Monday and Good Friday. So there, there could clearly be far more holidays, depending on your governor. You could have, which one was the one that didn't give any days off? Was that was Dugard? He was pretty stingy. I can't remember now, but. So it's up, it's really up to the governor. But in the end, there's still eleven holidays that are recognized. So I did include the states. That is from the state employee handbook, and then the laws were in there, too.
And just FYI, she did just give off the Friday after Thanksgiving and December twenty-third for this year.
Twenty what?
Third. Twenty-third, December twenty-third.
Christmas is on a Saturday.
Sundays on what? Or Christmas is on what?
Uh, Sunday this year.
So that Friday, huh?
Yep.
So.
And, and you get the twenty.
Well, it is pre-election.
And the twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth would be officially, right. So, but this would go into effect January one on that.
I move to amend our county handbook as set forth in section six oh six on page one of item number fourteen.
Second.
Motion in the second to essentially adopt what's in front of us in the packet.
State, state holiday schedule?
The state holiday schedule, in addition, with addition of presidential or governor-named days off. Further discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I just think this makes sense that we follow the state schedule, so.
I have one comment. It's not a huge deal. Is it simpler to just leave South Dakota codified law one five one?
It's the same thing.
And get rid of the days, though, so if something is changed?
You mean the, the, the names? Well, the names in one five one, they don't necessarily have. For example, it says the first Monday in September, commonly known as Labor Day.
The, the advantage of having them listed is, I'm a new employee, I get my handbook, I open it up, and it says, go to the state law.
Yep. And I'm fine with leaving it. It's pretty rare. They're gonna, they're gonna take one away, but I never thought we'd be adding either, and we're adding.
So that, that's the, I thought of that.
Why?
I know. And if they do add in the future, it's a simple amended.
We just have to make sure it gets amended, is the thing.
Correct, yep.
It already says that these are holidays per SDCL one five one. So I think we're covered both ways.
Right. I'm just. I'm just saying if one five one changes and this doesn't, then you don't know it, because you don't go to it. It's not-
It says per SDCL one five one.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Oh, and for January one?
Yes.
Yes, yep. So it has to be January one. Gives us time to update it and everything, and then reprint.
Okay, item fifteen, Kaiser Road. Dan?
Yep, see Mindy's here. Sherry and I met last week with quite a few individuals with Kaiser Road. They had several concerns about it, and, you know, it was, it was a good meeting, I thought. There's a few things I think we can do short term to help those guys out. Issues of, that's a very highly traveled gravel road, probably the highest traveled one in the county. And they were just looking at long-term options. One, one thing I would like to probably do for next meeting is they are really looking at having a reduction of speed. There's apparently some issues of speeding vehicles in there. I've already contacted the sheriff, and he's going to do some additional patrols out there, but-
So what are the problems out there?
High speed on the roads. There's some issues of near accidents and people losing pets. People driving just way, way, way too fast. So we'll probably do, according to Mike, try to do a resolution for the next meeting and bring it down to thirty miles per hour. And then, did you have anything you wanted to share since you're here, Mindy? Mr. Chair, is that all right?
Come forward. State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mindy Schweitzer. I live at four three four eight six Kaiser Road. As Dan indicated, him and Sherry joined, probably representatives from almost all thirty-five homes on our one-mile stretch. So we were just focused on Kaiser Road at the time. We've lived out there for ten years, but for the past roughly three to five years, we've had no treatment on the road, which I understand a lot of people think that that leads to just dust control. There's way more that it's allowed to help. When I say treatment, I should say mag chloride treatment. Not only has it helped with the dust, but we have extreme washboard. I grew up on a farm, did everything on a farm. I get it, I get a good maintained gravel road. This is not a good maintained gravel road. Since we've lived out there, we've had one death that I am aware of in a near-close accident last year that really could have affected a family. And they, the child lost control on washboard. And so, what a few of us have done at the beginning of Kaiser Road, we met with Mike, worked with Mike, and we actually paid out of pocket to go ahead and treat a portion of Kaiser Road, about a fourth of it. It cost us right under three thousand dollars. It's treated based on regulations and as far as the treatment needed to handle truck traffic and everything else. So paid for it out of pocket. One, it almost minimized the washboard in front of our locations, and also obviously helped with dust control. But there's just so much more to it. The speed, as Dan indicated. We have multiple little kids in the neighborhood. I live directly on that road. I have two little children. We would like to see the speed limit reduced as soon as possible. We understand. Then, two, we would ask for more help in enforcing the speed limit as well out there. Right now, it's a speed limit of forty miles an hour, and we are right off of Highway four thirty-five, which has a speed limit of forty-five miles an hour. So we are only five miles under a main, a high-traveled highway. We ask also that you guys could consider, you know, looking at Kaiser Road, going in the future for some kind of treatment. Whether it be bringing mag chloride back onto the road, looking at crushed asphalt onto it as an application. There are several of us homes out there that we do use crushed asphalt. It has set up very well over a period of time with just moisture and the rain on the road with treating that. The road grader for any of the portion of the road that's not treated has been out almost two to three times a month. So they send a road grader to that road almost once a week to try to maintain that. We all know gas prices are high, maintenance. I don't have the exact operating costs for a road grader, but I can about imagine when you look at treating that entire road being right around twelve thousand dollars for a one-mile stretch of thirty-five homes, by the time you're sending a road grader once a week to treat it, it can be extremely costly. One of the concerns I know that I've seen coming up, and I apologize, I was not here the night of the highway meeting as it was looked at on the five-year plan, but there are treatments being done to roads north of Yankton. And I get that they're ag-based roads, there's people out there, but there are homes out there that, or excuse me, the stretch of the roads have only about one to two houses per mile road. We are the first gravel road off of the lake area in the summertime. It is extremely traveled, not only by the people who live in the road, but also anybody else leaving the lake area. Kaiser is also the main road with multiple little tributary roads off of it, little fingering roads. So people have to come in and use Kaiser. So it's not just the thirty-five homes that are directly on it. There's future development being done off of that road into multiple different areas, into Sundance, into other back areas out there in the county. I just ask that we be considered for some kind of treatment going forward, whether it be mag chloride treatment, crushed asphalt, paving the road, chip sealing it. There's just multiple things wrong with that road out there that it needs to be considered. So, thank you guys so much. Appreciate it. Thanks, Dan.
You want to get a resolution?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, can I email you, Deb, and do a resolution for-
I've already talked to Rob today.
Okay, you guys have a resolution already for-
Rob said he'll put on together.
Okay, so I guess next meeting, do a resolution to do that. And I believe Mike was interested in Kaiser Road and four thirty-four, since those roads are kind of together, to do a resolution on both of them, so they're the same speed, so. One other thing, I guess, we're, the traffic study we're doing in that area, Gary, I mean, that's going to do a traffic count of that. So we have some hard data on the number of vehicles per day on those roads. Is that correct? And Kaiser Road's a part of that?
Actually, Mike, Mike plans on doing, doing the count. It wasn't part of our, our study, but-
Okay.
But he plans on doing the count, and then they'll incorporate that into the study.
The one request, and it's probably too late, is that we do a count during the summertime. I don't believe there's a count now, and we'll have one in the fall, but, you know, some of, it's pretty seasonal out there, and just have that considered, sorry.
Sure.
So just generally, from the meeting, we were there probably an hour and a half, something like that. It was a good crowd. And I think it gave folks a, a chance to voice their concerns, certainly, and, and we listened. To speak on that speed limit, right now, it's supposed to be forty-five. So coming from the north off Highway fifty onto four thirty-four, there's a forty-five mile an hour sign. When you come off of the state highway, is it one fifty-three? What is that highway? Do you know what the name of that highway is? I don't know, it's four hundred and thirty-fifth in my mind.
Cotton-McGreal, by the way.
That, the state highway. So when you turn onto Kaiser Road, there's a speed limit sign there at forty-five? Forty, okay. So there's some discrepancy. And Mike said there's a sign that says thirty-five somewhere along four hundred and thirty-fourth, because someone changed it. So someone took down our sign and put up a thirty-five. So I highly encourage people out there, please, leave the street signs alone. They get stolen all the time off my road, and it's dangerous. They take down signs on steep hills, blind intersections. Fortunately, I haven't run across a stop sign being gone. But it's, it is a safety hazard. Signs are there for a reason, so please, if you're listening, pass that along. So there's, there's some work to be done to try and even everything up. To be clear, what are we asking for, thirty-five?
Thirty is what I-
Thirty?
Yeah.
On the whole road?
That's what the, the request was for. And when I spoke with Mike anyway, he would like both of those roads to be a similar, well, the same speed.
When you say both, which?
Kaiser Road and then where it intersects with four thirty-four up to Highway-
Where it goes?
Exactly.
Okay.
There was also some concern about trucks. I don't know if we want to do a note through trucks either. That wasn't brought up, but that's an option. But when I did talk to Mike Selachek, he, he did recommend we just do the same speed on both of those roads. Four thirty-four, south of fifty, and then Kaiser Road.
Okay.
West Eleventh Street has thirty-five miles an hour on Deer Boulevard, thirty miles an hour on West Eleventh Street.
How's that working?
Probably just as washboard boardy as your road, as are many, many, many other in the county. But I would go for the lower speed limit, because Mike tells me it has a lot to do with the washboard.
And I think a lot of the houses are, are a lot closer to the road on Kaiser than Eleventh Street. And I think it was unanimous, everybody-
I don't think so, Dan. All of ours are right. We got two cul-de-sacs, but the rest of them are right on the road.
So it's-
Have you looked at the option that was used on West Eleventh Street?
We have talked about it, but it's-
Come up here.
This is for our at-home viewers.
What was that?
This is for our at-home viewers.
Sherry did provide that to us. We are getting back together as a group here within a couple of weeks to talk. The big concern that we have on that is how well it can uphold truck traffic. Right now, we have multiple side dumps going down that road. We have multiple different construction vehicles. There's quite, I, I work remote, I work from home, so I see a lot of this going on. And I'm not sure if that could withhold the amount of truck traffic. That was a big question that came up that night, is if it could really hold that.
Same concern that you do with, with heavy trucks and so forth. You might tell your people that they can go up and look at, what is it?
Three oh one.
Three oh one, and that's been-
That was mentioned, you mentioned that.
Three or four years.
Yeah.
The intent with Eleventh Street and three oh one is that, yeah, it would be designed to withstand truck traffic.
Because that's the double chip seal or blotted-
Yeah.
Concept, yep.
Yeah. What they do is put, most of the, it's in the base that- So if you, if you put enough base and have a good base for that road, that double chip seal seems to be holding up fine.
Yeah, and I think that that's another concern we have. I mean, when that road had issues, gravel was not brought back in and put on a portion of that road, just due to the high demand for gravel at that time. So there is a part of the road that really could use a lot more gravel onto it. And then, when the road grader comes, it's not really, what's the word I'm looking for? It's not done at like a-
It's not crowned.
It's not crowned, thank you, sorry. And so everywhere, like, it just keeps chipping and, and taking it down even more. So if there could be a better crown put on that road, I think that could help too.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Sherry, you had something to say?
Yeah, and, you know, and other things were brought up. The, there was a suggestion to do a blinking speed limit sign. So if you're over, it blinks and said, "Slow down." And the city just put one in, and if I recall correctly, it was four thousand, forty-five hundred dollars to put in a, a speed limit sign like that. It was asked if we could put up cameras and write tickets with a camera. Sheriff said, "No." So that's a no-go. But anyway, I did take a look at the area, similar to what we did with West Eleventh, and I counted homes. There are along Kaiser, there are- There are twenty-eight homes that are within three hundred foot that abut that street. If we add in those who use the street, very similar to what we did on West Eleventh, we added people who lived further from the project, you're up to forty homes. And so, if, if that mile cost a hundred forty thousand, which is a estimate, to put a double chip seal on with forty homes, it's seven hundred dollars for five years. Almost exactly what West Eleventh was. They were six eighty-five for five years.
Per year?
Well, but you have to remember, this won't be done. If it's done, the earliest it would be done is twenty twenty-four, and prices are going to go up. So I cushioned that a little bit there. Mike thought that there might be a little bit of culvert work on this one, whereas there was none on West Eleventh. There would be some more work pulling the shoulders in, because some places it's very wide. So hence the hundred forty thousand for that mile. So, but when you start looking, those folks aren't the only ones that use Kaiser Road. If you look up four thirty-four, there's a boatload of homes. And so what happens if we would do the whole L? And that's a mile and a half down on four thirty-four, a mile over on Kaiser Road. If you look at the homes that lived within the three hundred foot, that ends up being about seven hundred thirty-seven dollars for each of those homes for five years to do two and a half miles. And then, the whole thing would be paved. The L would be paved. The challenge you have there is we have three-ten. And we just, I don't know how many meetings you've held with three-ten since the last discussion.
I haven't had any since then.
But that's a, I didn't do anything with three-ten. And that was the road that's essentially dirt trail off the center line, et cetera. But I did include those folks, because they go down three-ten and over on Kaiser. So West Eleventh framework could certainly be applied in this situation, but we need a lot more meetings with homeowners to see if that's a sellable plan going forward. So certainly, I think Kaiser, I think if today we said, you know what? We'd like to do that on that one mile of Kaiser, I think the folks in that room would sit down at the table and discuss it. I don't think they'd say, "Uh, no way." Because when you start thinking of what you paid for mag chloride, and if you do that every year, if you just bit the bullet and did a little more for five years, you'd have a hard surface. So I, I, and when we did West Eleventh, we knew full well Kaiser was coming. So that was my little marked map.
And plus, they, we, on West Eleventh, I believe, have a requirement for annual maintenance.
In there, it's written the difference of what, what it would normally cost for a gravel road versus-
Hard surface.
What it would do to hard surface, a chip seal every seven years. You know, whatever, if it was every five years, today it'd average out to five thousand a mile, or five thousand a year for county maintenance. And if you're grading that road once a week and doing stuff, you're bumping that five thousand. So the other thing about this area is the green on here is vacant lots. There's several vacant lots in here that I know for sure. One of them's already got a house on, it's just not on Beacon yet. So those homes, and every new home lowers that average cost. So I did take a look at that. It's pretty preliminary, but the next time we get together, we can certainly talk about that approach on there. So-
I'd tell you that a hundred percent of the people on West Eleventh are satisfied with the plan.
And we wrote, and I explained during the meeting, we wrote that resolution, if ninety percent agreed, everybody was taxed. If less than ninety percent agreed, only those who agreed were taxed. So that ninety percent was our threshold there. You know, because you hate to get forty people for it, and you got one person who says, "No way." And that's why it was written that way, so. But otherwise, it was, it was just a good discussion. I'm not going to go every little, every little line item I wrote down, but, so.
What's our next step? You mentioned more house meeting. I mean, is that more just one-on-one meetings together? Or do we keep encouraging people to come?
Yeah, you know, I, I don't think coming, what we did with West Eleventh is, once they made the request, I met with a representative group, like four or five of all of the homeowners. And we would talk, and they would go back and talk. And then, we would talk again, because we were really trying to understand the laws to begin with, what we could and couldn't do. So there was a lot of, well, we, we met for forty-five minutes, maybe once a month for a while. And they did a lot of the legwork. They went and had every homeowner sign that they would agree to do this. And so they could come and say, "Here's the stack of support. We will pay for it." So, kind of gives you an idea.
My understanding, then, based on that, is we probably would not go into effect until twenty twenty-four?
The earliest you could do is twenty twenty-four, because it, it's a tax levy, a special levy on your properties, and we have to pass it by July fifteenth every year to be going to affect the following year.
Yep. So I would just ask, in addition to that, I mean, knowing that it might be that, just consideration to help with the road as it is right now.
Yep, and I talked to Mike about the county's ability to apply mag chloride themselves versus having a contractor do it. You know, because that could potentially, maybe you pay for the mag chloride, we apply it, and then that saves everybody. So that was just very general discussion I had with Mike, so.
I personally think that we should have a policy that allows every person, that if they choose to put mag chloride on for six hundred feet or by their house, that they can do that, and then one week or something, we contract with somebody to bring it in and do those.
Those areas. Yep, and Mike's good with that, and he's been doing that. The only thing he ever asked is let him know beforehand, so he can prep the road. And he did that with you.
Yeah, we worked alongside him. He prepped it, they brought in water, then we paid for the treatment and the work to be done, so.
Correct. But for the county to do it, we have to have a storage tank, because we have to receive a load. So we have to have a poly tank, and I'm not sure the regulations, if we have to have a dyke dairy and all that, Mike was going to check into that. So it's easy to say, "Yeah, just buy a tank," but there's regulations around stuff. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, guys. Yep, absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll look for a resolution for speed limit and then continued meetings. Do you want to be the point of contact, per se, or who's?
By default.
You're the one, you're the one here. Dan, Sherry? Another meeting down the road?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, item sixteen, executive sessions.
Sure, yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. This came up at a forum this past week on trying to reduce executive sessions. Did a little bit of research, talking to Brian Hunoff back in, oh, the early two thousands. They did poor relief in open session, and I think that's maybe something we can get back to. I know we do it by case number, so none of us know who that is. And I guess I'm here to see if the board has any interest. I certainly believe less executive sessions is better. If that person can't be identified, I think that would be a good option.
Ms. Lilly?
It's up to the commission. If that happens, there will be no discussion, because our office is uncomfortable with the fact that there could be some identifying information that gets discussed. And obviously, any medical information is prohibited to be discussed in open session. If you guys want Mary to come in and say, "Here it is, approve it or don't approve it," and understand, she will not answer any questions. That's up to you.
I don't think that would be helpful.
No.
Because how would we have any kind of intelligent discourse on whether or not a person was a resident or not a resident, or was elective, or had insurance?
Or what they're.
Because you could.
Were hospitalized for.
Because you could narrow it down pretty easy, I would think.
So I, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I would have the same thought, to be honest. I thought, okay, once we're getting into the system, maybe we can get it away from executive session. You've kind of answered my question. I would say, or suggest, we've kind of been tailoring what's, how it's presented and how it's working. It seems to be going in the right direction. I would say, once this has been working for some time, maybe at some point, we can bring it out here. And if there's a certain one that there's questions, we can call executive session. But if we, you know, if we get to the point where we're into executive session, and it's pretty much whatever Mary's saying we're going with it, then maybe we can move it out here. But if we're always questioning things, or trying to understand what's going on, then it's probably going to have to stay in executive session.
Well, and it, you know, I guess my thing is, we don't have to schedule it for, we don't have to schedule executive session. You can do it, I mean, we're obligated to process those files. What Brian is talking about is when those files weren't getting processed. That's why we had over two hundred poor relief files that we had to process, because they weren't being brought to the commission. If you don't want executive session, you can say, "We're only going to do executive session once a month." Then I guess, once a month it is.
So one or two times.
You know, Clay County puts executive session on every one of their agendas. Whether they have it or not, they just put it on there.
Well, I don't think it's unheard of for something to come up and they call it, even without on the agenda, just call it an executive session and go.
I looked at all of Clay just to see, and it looks like they always have an executive session if needed at the bottom of their agenda. So, you know, you guys can, but I, I'm not comfortable discussing and answering a single question about poor relief in open session. I think that is opening yourself up to something being disclosed that legally should not happen, and I'm. That's up to you.
We have a lot more claims today than we did ten years ago, twenty years ago. And they're more aggressive claims.
With a new attorney.
You think? They're huge. I mean, it wouldn't take much, let's say if we had a claim for forty-seven thousand dollars. It wouldn't take a rocket scientist to figure out who that person was. I mean, we live in a small community.
Especially when if the procedures are discussed and what was going on, and that, yeah, I would agree.
Well, don't we, we have that piece of paper that doesn't have names on it, and it's a case file, and we approve case one, two, and deny number three, for example, and then we can turn those papers back in. And, you know, I just thought this is something to look at. This is the balance between an open government and closed government. It's always erring on the side of caution to do all of this in executive session. But I think as elected officials, we should try to push as much stuff out into the public as we can, and this is an example of that. I see, I see both your sides, and I understand, but I think maybe we could challenge ourselves, like Joe said, have this done. And the lady who does it does a great job. I think we follow her recommendations most of the time.
I understand the theory about, let's have more transparency, but the flip side of that coin is if you have all of those claims, twenty-two dash seventeen through twenty-two dash thirty-four, you can narrow it down. Somebody loses a leg, well, let me guess which one it is.
Well, couldn't you do that anyway in the claims that we pay out? I mean, if somebody really wanted to, they could go through the claims that we pay and find that bill and.
I think the, when there's more discussion, there's things that, there's been situations, Dan, where I know we don't get patient names in there. But I know there's been situations where you have abstained from voting on it, because you felt you knew who it was based off the information that we discussed. And to have that in the public's eye is probably opening ourselves up.
I, you know, it's, again, it goes back to there's a point of transparency. But, for example, if we have someone that we're investigating criminally, we don't post on Facebook. You know, Mr. X is being investigated for being a drug dealer, because then Mr. X is going to find out about it. You know, so there are some things that have to remain private, and it's not a transparency issue. I'm not trying to hide anything from Mr. Fring over there. It's just, that's, that's the law. And so when you, when you start opening it up, and like I said, you can do it. Our office policy would be, we just would not comment, period. So if you had a question, we're not going to answer it. And so if you determine that you just want to put poor relief in regular session, you can certainly.
Well, again, I would just suggest if we get to that point where we are comfortable with all the recommendations, then maybe we can discuss that, and I don't think we're there. There's.
I personally believe that we should continue the way we have and be more attentive to being sure that we're acting as we should in and outside of executive session.
Correct. Any other thing else? With that, I would entertain public comment. Does anybody in the audience care to make public comment at this time? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Commissioner updates. I can start. Okay. I just want to, I just touch on this. It wasn't on the agenda for a reason, but I think we all received requests for hand-counting ballots. I did speak with the gentleman who wanted to be on the agenda for it. We talked about it and ultimately decided that it was not appropriate for the agenda. But I did want to just mention that we received those requests. In my opinion, there's a few things, but talking with the Secretary of the State, our state's attorney, I know Sherry contacted Lincoln County State's Attorney. I think the majority of the state outside of Tripp County Commissioners are under the understanding that elections are handled by the auditor's office, and the state gives the auditor's office that power to do so. It does not forfeit, or it does not give the county commissioners that obligation specifically in codified law. And then the other thing is, we're halfway through an election, and to try to get this changed, I just think the timing was poor. We, our tabulation system in the state has been in use for twenty years. And we're, you know, two weeks from final, not even two weeks from the final election. So for that reason, it wasn't on the agenda, but I just wanted to make comment that we received those requests.
Isn't one of the things those folks are concerned about is ballot, ballot answers, I don't know what the right word is, selections would be changed by this machine? My understanding is this machine, which the auditors use, is not hooked up to the internet, cannot be hooked up to the internet. So it's not like somebody sitting in some small cigar-filled, smoke-filled room in Nigeria is changing the answers to the election. So I don't think that hand-counting ballots at this stage of the game would be a step forward. It seems like it would be a step back a hundred years.
And the machine was tested on Monday.
On Monday.
And it was open to the public, and one person came and watched. And it performed perfectly.
It did.
So I was surprised at that. I thought there would be more people there to watch the machine being tested, but.
Well, again, I didn't want to discuss at length or anything, just bring it up, so that's the only thing I have.
My updates were all on the agenda, so.
Operation Green Light's going. It should be turned on tonight, so.
Okay.
Tonight?
It should be, it should be on, according to Jeff. So I'll have to go check that out when we're all done here.
That's supposed to run this week, right?
Till, I want to say till Veterans Day. November first through Veterans Day, so.
I thought it was the first through the fourteenth.
I'll have to check the resolution. You got me. Yeah, one of those days. But it's, you know, appreciate that we did that. I've already had some good comments, and so that's a positive thing for our community.
And the county has closed for Veterans Day, and that's on a Friday.
Anybody else?
Oh, we have to have a special meeting.
Yep.
And I think the term's on Thursday at ten.
When?
Thursday at ten.
This Thursday at ten?
No, after the election, so November tenth at ten a.m. It's a Thursday. Are you in court?
I'll be in Elk Point, but I'll try and resolve that tomorrow.
So we have to canvass it. That's the only thing. Okay.
Because it has to be the state by the fourteenth.
Which is Monday, okay.
Ten o'clock, you said?
That work for enough of us? I should be able to make that, so. Okay. All right. With that, items for next meeting. We're going to have.
Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct.
I will endeavor to.
Leave Facebook off.
Kaiser Road, four thirty-four resolution.
Progress I make before it's on. Yeah, you can let me know about it.
You had the speed limit.
Speed resolution for Kaiser Road.
So when will the next meeting be?
So it'll be the fifteenth will be our official meeting.
Hey, when will our secret unofficial meeting be?
This special meeting will be November tenth to canvas the vote.
Okay.
Thanks for pointing that out, Wanda.
Trying to be transparent.
All right. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now adjourned.